Like, grab some, this is regular board of education, Region 12 meeting. Number 16, Suzie, can you take that?
Valerie Anderson, absent. Toni Medini.
Here.
Alan Brown.
Here.
Gregory Kava.
Here.
Michelle Goro.
Here.
Emily Hibbert.
Here.
James Hurstfield.
Yes.
Kelly Lott. Jennifer Pody.
Here.
Michael Sinatra.
Here.
I am here, and Peter Tagley.
Here.
Valerie Anderson.
Alright, thank you. Opportunity for the public to comment on the agenda items. I'd like to actually move this, so I have some presenters here that I'd like to get on. I will go to item number three, our consent agenda. If anyone wants to remove anything from the consent agenda, it was the minutes for our meeting. Any approval with a field trip? Alright, the consent agenda is approved. To report to the chair, I will introduce Teresa DeFrito, who has some special guest roles. Teresa?
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank all the families, students, and teachers that are here this evening. We do have a treat for you. You are going to see these mathematicians, young mathematicians, in action. I want to also bring to your attention this poster that is in every classroom, K-12 math teachers and elementary K-5 classrooms. And it is explicitly an overview of the eight math practices. And I did pass out a handout that supports, it has a description for each of these math practices, because we really are developing youngsters to be critical thinkers, to be able to defend their reasoning, to problem solve and persevere. We're talking about habits of mind here. So I'm really excited that we have a lot of students here with us this evening. And we don't want them to stay out too late, so that's why we asked to have them go first on the agenda. I'm going to introduce Mrs. DeFrito, because she's going to go first with her kindergarten.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming to our meeting.
Thank you. My name is Julie DeFrito, I'm a kindergarten teacher at Washington Primary School. My kindergarten team and I really have been enjoying the Bridges program. It's definitely a rigorous and engaging program aligned with the Common Core, going really deeper on fewer skills. There are three different components of the Bridges program. Number Corner, which goes through, we do it every morning, and it goes through various skills, calendar work, we have a number line, we count days in school. We do that every morning. We also have our problems and investigations, which is the main component. It's the whole group lesson, a lot of turning and talking with partners. And then, following that, we have our workplaces, which is really the opportunity for the students to work in pairs and in small group for a lot of hands-on exploration and practice and review of what we just did in our whole group lessons. So, we have an activity from our Number Corner, from one group of students, and then one of our workplaces from another. And they've been working really hard at speaking loudly and clearly in Grand II sharing activities. So we have Wyatt and Maggie that's going to share one of our Number Corner activities. And they're going to need your help to participate too. Okay, so Wyatt, why don't you go ahead and speak?
This game is called Cube Out of the Box. You play it during Number Corner. You need a group of 10 oranges, a group of 10 blues, a spinner, and a slot box.
Talk about the way you play.
It's the way he plays. He spins a spinner, and see how many combinations you get in your bill.
Okay, do you want to spin first? Okay, so there's a spinner with the numbers 1, 2, 3, and 4, and she spun a 4. So the first thing we do is talk about what the combinations using blue and orange could possibly be before we actually pick our cubes. So, what are some of the possible combinations for 4? Who wants to go first? Go ahead.
Three with four oranges.
It could be four oranges, okay. So we're going to pick cubes out of the box, and we're going to see what the actual combination is. But first, we're coming up with possible combinations. So it could be four oranges. Do you know another one, Wyatt?
Two blues and one orange.
Okay, two blues and one orange would be three, maybe spun a four. So we need one more.
Another blue.
Another blue, so three blues and one orange. What would be another combination?
Three oranges and one blue.
Three oranges and one blue. Can you think of another one, Wyatt? Here's what we have so far.
One blue and... Four blues.
You could do four blues, you could pick that. And there's one more. Can you figure out the other combination? Wyatt, can you go first? We have four blues, four oranges, one orange and three blue. One blue and three orange, or...
Two blues and two oranges.
Alright, two blues and two oranges. So now we pick out of the container. Do you want to go up and ask who would be willing to pick one out? And then we're going to eliminate, based on each cube as we pick one at a time, what the possible options are. So go ahead, you need to pick anyone, have anyone pick one? This is Maggie O'Hara. Pick one cube. Daughter of Ally O'Hara, okay? An orange. Am I good? Try to pick more. So what color did you get, Maggie?
It can't be just blues.
Okay, so you're eliminating, it cannot be all four blues, because Dr. Casantino picked one orange, very good. So we still have four choices left, why don't you pick someone else? Good job. Go ahead, you could pick something, Wyatt, do you want to pick something?
Yes.
It's a blue, so we have one orange and one blue. If we pick the blue, that means it cannot be... Which meant all oranges. Anybody can help out too, it can't be all oranges, because they have one of each. Try to pick someone else. How about the children next to her, Wyatt, just go right next to her.
You don't mean off your green one?
The black one.
There you go.
Another orange, okay, so we have two oranges in the blue. That means it cannot be, which one? We have two oranges and one blue. Yeah, so it can't be three blues and one orange. So we're eliminating it, okay, one more.
Maggie has three.
Okay, that's nice. We got another orange. So what is the combination then? It cannot be this last one, right? Two blues and two oranges. So the combination that we got was three oranges and one blue. So that just shows that coming up with, spinning the number of four, they can come up with possible combinations, different ways that you can make four. And then, just through analyzing what you pick one at a time, they're able to figure out what is the only combination possible. So that's one of the activities that we do whole group in the morning, is one of our Number Corner activities. Then we have Brooke and Jonathan, that are going to explain one of our workplaces, which we model and practice whole group first. And then, it's one of the opportunities after the whole group math lesson, where the kids can choose this Count and Compare Dots game to practice some of the skills. So, do you want to explain, Brooke, how you play?
This game is called Count and Compare Dots. And you need a deck of cards called ten frame cards that look like this. And you need one door that looks like this. And on the door it says less than if you have less than card. And equal to, if you have equal cards together. And greater than, if you have a greater than card than the less than. And at the bottom for the end, you spin the spinner. And if it lands on less than, the less than person that has less than card gets the less than card and the greater than card. And there's, and if you spin greater than, the person that had greater than gets greater than and less than card.
This is how you play. So you and your partner both pick one card, and you compare them and see which one is less than or greater than. And if you have the less than code, it goes on the less than side. And if you have the greater than code, it goes on the greater than side. And if your cards are equal to, it goes on the equal to box. And if you spin, and it gets on the greater than, the greater than wins. And if you spin, and it gets on the less than, the less than wins.
Do you guys want to play a couple rounds to show how it's done? And just make sure you explain what's on your cards, will you?
Three.
Five and five is ten.
I put mine on the less than side, because three is less than ten.
I put mine on the greater than side, because ten is more than three.
Okay, go ahead and spin, see what you have on your card. So how come you took the cards?
Because it got on the less than, and I picked the less than card.
One plus one equals two.
One plus one equals two.
Where'd you put them?
And they equal on the left side.
So nobody wins that round, let's do one more.
Five plus five equals ten.
Three plus two equals five.
Alright, and what can you tell them about the numbers five and ten?
Five plus five equals ten.
And there's just the five pairs, and if you took away the bottom, it would be five.
Right, so double five makes ten. So let's see who wins. Give it a spin. So the game goes on, and we usually do this about 10 minutes. They stick to the same activity, but it's just really great practice of using the math vocabulary and looking at numbers in just a different way.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Hosking, who's a second grade teacher, will present with his students now.
So hello, thank you all for giving your time. We are very excited to come here today and show off just two workplaces for you. As was mentioned, my name is William Hosking, second grade teacher at Washington Primary. And as a math teacher, I'm just always looking to build skill fluency, build problem solving capacity, you know, work on things that we need to work on, but also kind of build off your own personal intuitions. And Bridges has done all that for us. It is something that, you know, the games are all fairly intuitive, they're very high engaging. I would say actually all of our lessons incorporate, you know, a wide range of modalities that allow our students to be successful. And run the range from, you know, very concrete, manipulative-based lessons to very abstract thinking, which, you know, again, as a math teacher is what I'm looking for every day. And it is something that, you know, is very accessible and ready in the Bridges program. So we have two workplaces here today, and we are going to show off our great mathematical thinking. And Alondra and Maggie are going to start that off for us. One of you girls will have to say what your game is.
Um, our game is... Turn them over.
So what are you going to do here?
Um, I'm... We're going to roll the dice, because you need... You need one to pick cards, so you have to enter numbers. And we're going to roll the dice and add, and choose which number you need to make. And have the numbers, and whether it has all of your cards facing down first, or...
And what's the strategy kind of involved in this?
You can...
Plus backs.
And what do you want to do with your cards when you, so roll the dice, so it'll show it? What did you roll?
Nine plus four, and you need to try to get as much cards as you possibly can.
To equal what number?
To equal the same number when it ends.
So she rolled a four, and she's trying to flip over the equivalent value. So four, cards that equal four. But as Maggie strategically did, you know, it's possible to make it two cards, or three cards, or four cards, or more. And the goal is to get all of your cards facing down.
I got the same thing.
If you need to, you can use only what this one is.
So all you girls have finished your game. You guys want to explain what your game is? This is Caleb and Peyton. Thank you, girls.
We're playing a game called Star Power, and we need to... We need two dice and a spinner. And our goal is to get to 100 first, and get 10s. And add, we add up the star, our points, and see how much we got.
Well, first we start by adding this little imaginary hero box.
So we're building the skills of cutting out a number line, adding, subtracting double digits, numbers, using, you know, landmark numbers of 10 and 5 to kind of make that mental process a little bit easier. And with that strategy, you can see that kind of built into their game especially, where they're using those target numbers to move through, and being really strategic about what numbers they add first. So if it's 37... Sure.
And to get the star points, you just need to land on 10, 20, 30, 40, 50, 60, 70, 80, 90, or 100.
So they're getting points based on doing multiples of 10 first, which is intuitively what you'd want to do, but also the strategy of adding multiple-digit numbers, adding the larger values first, kind of builds that skill. You can see the excitement of Caleb. He's getting multiples of 10, so he gets to keep on earning points, which is a good thing.
I just like landed straight from 10, 20, 30.
They are willing to answer any questions.
Have any... Anybody have any questions? Is this going out throughout the district, or just in your classroom?
All second grades are doing this, yep.
All K-5.
Okay, fine.
Is using the Bridges program. Do you like the activities? Yes? Excellent.
I just have to snap a picture as a proud teacher. I'll make a move in a second.
I was just wondering, for the Bridges or for math, how much of the time is spent doing cubes? Like, is it all?
No.
Or is there something else to it?
For units worth of time, there's usually about five workplaces that are built in. So if you think about a month, or five to six weeks' worth of time for an entire unit, they're being introduced to five games. One of those class sessions is introducing the game. Then it actually serves later on as more of an enrichment activity, where, you know, if they're a fast finisher, and the classwork is done and it's been checked, they can choose to go to a workplace and practice a skill that they're wanting to practice. So, you know...
Sounds like, so let's say if I land at 49, and I get another 10, and I land at 59. If that happens, I do not get the 50 or 50. So you do not get that, if that happens.
And sometimes, within the sequence of lessons, sometimes the games are reinforcing a skill that we've been practicing. Sometimes it is kind of introducing the skill for the first time to get kind of that data point of, you know, how much time do we need to spend on this afterward? But yeah, typically about five class sessions in that six-week span would be introducing these, and talking about the strategies and the math behind it. And then they are just kind of enrichment things from then on.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's how you get to really...
We now have Mrs. Collantin, and her fourth graders will be sharing some activities they've been doing in class.
Alright.
Hi, everybody, I'm Jackie Collantin. For those of you who don't know me, these are my fantastic fourth graders, Garrett, Major, Samantha, and Jack. So we also are doing the Bridges program. We're doing more than the Bridges program, though. We're implementing the Common Core in a really rigorous way in our classroom. I just wanted to talk quickly about the shifts that I've seen. I've been in the district for 14 years now. And, um, hang on. So, uh, what I've really noticed, and I've taught third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade, is there's this big shift, and where we used to be kind of like a mile long and an inch deep, we decided to go deeper. So, for example, one of my... One of my Common Core objectives is that all fourth graders have to know how to factor every number from 1 to 100, and know whether it's composite or prime. And you don't do that in one unit of multiplication. So, um, that's what I'm loving about the program, is it gives me the time to spend on really important math skills. So before we start, I have two workplaces to show you. But we've been working really hard on perseverance and problem solving, because that tends to be, when they come to fourth grade, I really have to push them, right? And I have to push them, and more to really persevere through problem solving. So, we talked about double-digit times double-digit multiplication. And eventually, you're going to have to do that. And in my program, in fourth grade, Bridges does not tell me I should be teaching the zero-to-hero method, you know, where you put a zero in to hold the place, like we were all taught, hold the place. So I started a math lesson the other day, and I said, "Who thinks they can multiply 18 times 25?" And they were like, "Oh yeah, we can do that, we can do that." So I said, "Alright, well, show me you can do that." So I had all these different representations of 18 times 25 in my classroom. I had an area model, which was pretty impressive. And I had the finger strategy. Jack went to do an array, and did this really neat little finger strategy. And then Samantha, like, jumped upon this distributive method property. So can you just explain to them how you did 18 times 25?
So I technically did the break apart method, and I did 10 times 25, and that equaled 1, or 250.
Yeah.
And then I did 25 times 8, but I knew easily that 25 times 4 would be 100. So I just did 25 times 4, and then multiplied it by 2, which equals 200. And then I did 200 plus 250, and I got 450.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's what is happening in our classroom every day. And not only is she, she calls it the break apart method, it's really, you know, the distributive property in action. But, um, so we have thinking like that every single day. And it's so impressive to see them comfortable with that. So the two games we have today for you are a factoring game, which requires lots and lots of strategy. So Garrett and Major are going to be showing you that. And then, moolah on my mind, and we had to Google what moolah meant, because I thought it was Italian, but it's not Italian. Apparently, it's just slang for money. So, moolah on my mind. Moolah on my mind and factoring. So who wants to go first and explain it? Why don't you guys explain moolah on my mind?
Alright, so moolah on my mind, what you do is you have a spinner, and you have a penny, a dime, a quarter, and a nickel. And then you have two dice. And you can either choose the black ones, which are like up to six, and then the hard ones, which are up to nine. And we have both today. And you have to roll it and yell out multiplication or addition. And say I got like a 2 times 4, then I do 2 times 4, 2 plus 4, which equals 6 or 8. And then you have to spin the spinner, and if I get a dime, then I actually do 8 times 10, and that would be 80. So then I write 80 cents down here, and that's my total so far.
So what's your objective? What do you want to do?
You want to get more money than the other players.
You want to have more money in the end than the other player. So they kind of like developed that little variation on the game during workplaces the other day, because they wanted more money. So they said, "Why don't we multiply to get more money versus just add the two numbers on the dice?" So that's, I want you guys to just play a couple rounds, so they can see it, and just call out what you're doing, okay? If you're using the distributive method, say that.
Multiplication. And I got 5 times 6. So I write 5 times 6, and that equals 30. And then 30 times a penny would equal, so I got 30 cents. And that's my total so far.
And rather than using that cent sign, why don't you make it with a decimal notation? So we work on a lot of different strategies. And again, like our second grade teacher and our kindergarten teacher said, this is a chance for them to practice the language of math. They're not doing workplaces every day. In our classroom, like, maybe once a week?
Yeah.
Maybe once a week, we'll bring out the work places. What'd you get, John?
Um, I got 5, and I said multiplication, so I got 5 times 2, times... A quarter, so it's 10. Basically, it's 10 times 25. So, so I have $2 and 50 cents.
So they're developing some fluency, they're working, I can go around and talk to them about decimals and what decimals mean. It's really brought almost like a math workshop feel to our classroom, where we've been doing readers workshops and writers workshops. And now we've got this fun way to do a math workshop. So I can go in, and with our nice-sized classrooms, I can go and I can hit each group, and we can talk about decimal notation, and making it challenging. and we can talk about decimal notation and making it challenging for yourselves. How about two more?
Four times six.
Uh-oh. Hope you get the quarter.
That'd be good for a break.
But can you figure twenty-four times twenty-five out? So what method... How would you solve twenty-four times five? So she would use the old cross-multiplication. And we're not afraid to teach any strategy that works. So if you feel like you need cross-multiplication, this is how you do it. And they'll come and ask, or I'll show them. Awesome. All right, you guys can keep playing quietly, okay? And how about Garrett and Major? Do you want to explain what you're doing?
Well, this game is products four in a row. And what we do is you try and get four in a row. And you move these two stones. And you normally start on the same number and you can only move one at a time. So say I did one times three, which is easy, which is three. So then I'd be like X's rows. So then I go on three and then I write the fact down here.
And you can only move one of those factors at a time. So the strategy comes into play... You have to keep that one. The strategy comes into play when... Major, can you talk a little bit about your strategy that you use?
Uh, my strategy is to do defense first and then look around. And if they... if they aren't like getting stressed out, then I would start going for factors.
But now with the factors, what's your strategy, Major? Do you look around the board?
Yes.
For what your possible options could be. So right now, Garrett is on a three and a one. So Major's looking at that. And Major is still playing... Are you playing defensively?
Yes.
He is playing defensively. So he's just going to X Garrett out every chance he can get until he opens up a little space on the board for himself. It's really fun. This is my favorite one. You can come up and check them out. They wanted to see if you guys wanted to play.
I'd love to.
I know. Time is a string. Say, two more turns. All right.
Sounds like you're developing more fluency.
Right. Well, this is a real fluency-based... This game in particular, which is nice. So I keep this in the rotation a lot. This one's a lot trickier. That's why it's... You can really differentiate this one pretty well by changing it up to subtraction versus multiplication. Oh, nice.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome. I don't know if I can stop them.
Can you just play over there?
Yeah.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thanks for having us.
Thank you, Garrett, also, for bringing them out. Really wonderful.
Good job, Garrett.
So I just want to speak a little bit to the program that we are piloting. You heard the teachers refer to the Bridges program, which is by the Math Learning Center. And in prior years, there were, you know, different things happening. We wanted to really be coherent and consistent. So we do have this implemented as a pilot this year in all three schools. K-5, we wanted you to see the experiences that the students are having because they are very hands-on with deep thinking. And the kids have to explain and show their thinking. And they get into it because they don't want to stop doing math, as you heard. And this would be another opportunity, if the teachers have anything else that they wanted to share before, you know, leaving. I know that I appreciate you coming for sure.
Good job.
Thank you.
I was just asked to keep this so they could finish their game tomorrow.
Lovely, lovely. And now would be an opportunity as well for...
This is item six on our agenda. I'm sorry to have jumped, but I wanted to get the children out of here. Does anybody have any questions for Teresa?
Well, I'd like to call up Mrs. Judd and Mrs. Palala as well because I can get their particular interest.
Well, I think Teresa really touched upon the whole thing. But I think what you saw tonight is we are creating wonderful little mathematicians. And they are really learning. And you said it just recently about that vocabulary. It's incredible to hear kids actually being able to understand strategies, carrying those strategies, choosing the strategy that works best for them. So it's just amazing. You see the kids that are deeply, even first graders, deeply thinking about numbers, number sense, being able to do much more than I have seen in years. So I'm really pleased with our new program.
That's great. Thank you.
So there's like a huge collaborative piece, I should say. So students are talking to each other regularly about their math. There's a lot more precision. But I think the piece that we didn't mention is the assessment component to this program. And it always begins with a pre-assessment for every unit. And I think that's really helpful because the teachers identify what the students already know beginning at the unit. And like, for example, like if you have a student who scores ninety percent on that pre-assessment, you now are already energized to create different activities for that student for enrichment. So that piece is great. And then there's always a post-unit test. So you're really getting, you know, that right away. There's quarterly assessments. So after a period of time, they're reassessing. So that's an element that we haven't really had in a strong way with our past math programs. So this is really an important piece, I think, to the puzzle. So really pleased and exciting. Things are happening in there every day.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone?
Well, I don't know if we want to discuss this later on after the teachers leave, but I have a couple of questions about some of this.
About what?
Well, you know, we were presented with the Bridges program, which is, you know, a wonderful way to have manipulatives, to really understand from a game viewpoint what's going on. And that's all wonderful. But I'm still wondering, where does the conceptual teaching come in? That is to say, when you, you know, you give an assignment that has to be done. I think I'm just responding to some people's confusion, how to help kids with homework. And when you have basically an assessment and you give a series of problems, some of those problems are just gonna be totally conceptual, you know, twelve times minus six, you know, without manipulatives. How do these kids get taught those things?
The day-to-day lessons in Bridges still exist. These are called workplaces. So it's an opportunity for students to engage with each other, to further develop and build that mental math skill. So this is not the end-all and be-all. This is just a glimpse, one component. So I think you're thinking, like, when we think of teaching best practices, you're going to have that demonstration, that modeling piece that still exists. The students need to practice. So they're practicing in a wide variety of ways. And workplaces is one avenue for that continuous practice, both with partnerships and also independent work.
Well, how do we teach basic functions in Common Core that are so evidently... I'm not being judgmental because I don't know. I just need information. That seem to be different from what we've done before, both in, you know, just how those functions are taught. Subtraction, multiplication. How are we actually teaching those, other than the conceptual reinforcement?
Well, for instance, in...
I'm sorry, the physical reinforcement.
And maybe the teachers can respond too. But for instance, in first grade, they still teach addition by using groups of tens. So there are lessons that kids use, might use the blocks or they might use the timeframes. The timeframes, yeah, the sticks. And they're counting by tens and they're still adding. So there is still that traditional piece in terms of instruction. But it's also teaching kids a lot of different strategies they can do instead of just memorization. So we know if kids just... I mean, they eventually have to memorize their multiplication facts. But if they don't understand what it means to multiply, then it's not gonna stay with them and they're not gonna be able to apply it. So this does both.
So we do have math facts still.
Oh, absolutely. You have to be fluent. Yes, correct. You have to be fluent in your facts, addition, subtraction, multiplication, and division. And that's certainly gonna help them as they move along the continuum. But it's still that conceptual understanding. What is it about multiplication? It's not just memorizing them. And we get that a lot. We ask... Some parents say, "Why can't they just memorize them?" But there's a lot more to it than memorization.
And I'm gonna just call Julie by my phone. I was gonna put you on the spot with just like the expectation for kindergarten is to learn...
Fluency to five.
Right. So if you can just kind of go like how that happens for that... That's intense.
Yeah. By the end of the year, they have to be fluent with facts up to five. So addition and subtraction. So there's so many different ways that they gain that skill. So we start at the beginning of the year. Everything is based around the numbers five and ten. So we use five frames and we use ten frames. So we have dot cards. They practice supertizing. So if they put maybe three dots on one card, they can see that there are two squares on the five screen empty. So they see three and two make up five. We use a ton of different manipulatives. They draw pictures. They just explain their thinking in lots of different ways. But we really in kindergarten work up to five and they do have to really fluently have and be automatic with their facts, addition and subtraction to five. So there are lots of different ways we get them to that point. So just being able to visually see five in a lot of different ways, they ultimately get to that skill. And then I think when they get to first grade, it's up to, I want to say, twenty. They have to be fluent, often feeling to build as the years go on.
The writers of the Common Core developed it such that you could go very deep into these particular skills so that you can have that conceptual knowledge, not just, "This is how we do it. These are the steps. Now just memorize the steps." It's about them being able to understand it so we can build on that every year. Every year, building on that knowledge.
Michelle?
I was just wondering if you... How you handled transitioning students when you... Who are in the upper grades, fourth or fifth, were there some holes? Or...
Language.
The assessments are showing that information, particularly this year when we gave them a pre-assessment benchmark assessment that entering. And we found areas that were weaker. So yes, the teachers have to fill in those gaps using the materials that they have so that we can make that transition a little. But the kids like coming from kindergarten going into first, it's gonna be pretty seamless, you know, with their knowledge base.
Jackie, did you find...
Well, the little girl that was here, Samantha Holly, I wish she would have stayed because I had a challenge in fourth grade and so did the other fourth grade teachers in the district that you may get to the top of multiplication mountain. And that's not part of Bridges, but that's part of life. You need to have your multiplication facts memorized because that's gonna help you be successful. So she got to the top of multiplication mountain by October and she knows all of her multiplication facts. And yet, she still chooses to use distributive property to do her math and chooses to draw out an area model. I wish they could have shown you what an area model looks like because I have, you know, nine and ten-year-olds, you know, doing twenty-five by thirty-five and drawing it out in the time it would take me to do the cross-multiplication. So they're really just... It's intense. And it's really... It's amazing to see their fluency combined with their ability to think now. Really is.
That's one of the big pluses. I talked about the students being able to interact with each other, but actually using the math language and then to visualize what is happening in their mind so that the teachers can see what their thinking patterns are that's critical. And so this program does offer that. And so we really feel that we see the excitement in the students and we see that knowledge being retained.
All right. What's the goal of the change in the mathematics program to what you're doing now? Is it to make them... Is it to make students more amenable to understanding the higher-order math concepts they'll eventually encounter? Is that the idea, by just getting an intuitive feel of how numbers function and how they fit together and how they're composed and what are the various strategies for manipulating them?
Right. A couple of things. So these eight math practices that you have a description of in front of you are K-12. This is not just for one particular grade. So being able to develop young mathematicians who are going to persevere, you saw that excitement, who are going to debate with a partner about the answer that they have, provide evidence that they can show their thinking in different ways. We don't all have to get to that solution the same exact way. That's what we're trying to do. We are trying to teach the concepts. This is the vehicle. These are the strategies that we use to teach those particular concepts so that they can go on to be scientists and engineers and truly understand math. So that's what we're excited about is because we're seeing that happen at a very young age. And so this would have great gains as they progress.
And do you think it's gonna result in having fewer struggles as they move on? So that they're going to be more math friendly, almost?
Absolutely. I think sometimes people of older generations, you might hear say, "You know, I was never good at math." Why should we say that? No one's gonna go around and say, "I was never good at reading," right? So it's been kind of accepted not to be good at math. But really, it is a need for survival, especially with the way that society is today and how competitive it is and the service sector that's out there and the jobs that are out there. We really need to be able to be very literate in numeracy and in the literacy.
Great. My thanks, Brown.
Well, I guess I'm on this site, Common Core Math, which is really a great site, right? Because it goes through all the different grades. It just seems... I'm trying to find where I was before because I thought it was very interesting. It just seems that the vocabulary of how we teach math is different. Separate from Bridges, which is a hands-on, what are we really trying to do here visually? Which is excellent, which I wish I had eight hundred years ago. But, I mean, we are teaching things along string and array and things like that. That, I mean, how is the parent... I'm assuming everyone hits the wall, maybe in fifth grade, long division, I'm not sure. But, I mean, how do we do our functions differently in Common Core than we have before in terms of vocabulary?
If I may answer. They're teaching modern math. And it may be on what a parent is used to seeing. Your parent may have worked very diligently to stay up to the job. But we're assuming that the staff is presenting the most modern curriculum, nothing can...
I do want to mention...
That's my assumption.
This was the purpose of this.
I understand. I'm not trying to cut you off. I just...
Yes, you did. There's a really strong parent component that I really think is very helpful to parents. For every unit, it provides a parent with either one or two sheets of the explicit way that students can show their work. And depending on what level, it might be very numerical. I know the fifth grade, I'm thinking of the fifth grade, just went through the first time with volume and they were using very algebraic expressions. But so it showed the parent step by step how that came to be. So when the students brought home work, they could just follow these steps. So it does have a very strong parent component. Also, on the site, it has a parent resource section which shows videos. So if you needed as a parent to look up maybe how something is being taught in the classroom, you can see a video of that. So it's just leading parents to that. I know in region review, we did put that link in. We did share for parents to look at those videos. So we're really trying hard to get that information out so parents are more comfortable using those resources. But they are there and they're very good and explosive. I think our parents are starting to really utilize this because initially, we did have quite a few concerns. But as we're working through it, I think they're feeling more comfortable about it. And we did a couple of things to address that. We did have a presentation at each of the elementary schools and parents and their kids were invited to come. And I did give an overview of the Common Core and then offered the opportunity for the students to actually model the learning that is taking place in the classroom. And to your point about long division, which is a standard in fourth grade, students still need to know how to do long division, actually fluently. They've actually now stressed that. So the traditional stuff that you're used to is still embedded there. But they also need to understand what it means to divide.
Sure.
Not just going through the motions of, "These are the steps," without really understanding what it means. And so that's the piece that was lacking before that Common Core promises to close that particular gap.
Great. That's all I needed to know. Thank you.
The other last thing I want to say, because I heard homework a couple of times, and I've heard teachers say this over and over again. They really want to see what the child can do and where the child struggles. So it's true, there was a time that, you know, parents would just naturally help out. But because the instruction is different and the level of rigor and complexity is different, we really want to know if a student is struggling as opposed to having somebody else, you know, at home trying to go right into a... trying to go right into assist. We want them to persevere, try different methods and then come back to school the next day and actually say and articulate to a teacher what they tried to do and where the stumbling block was. That I keep hearing is huge.
Great.
So we're taking some things off of parents' plate, hopefully.
Always, always.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate it very much. Thank you. Very interesting. All right. Thank you. I guess we'll go to Dr. Ed Vai, Super Tenchport. I just moved right into item six.
You did, I'm sorry, I missed that. Okay, okay, Super Tenchport, hi everyone. A couple of things. When you walked in, hopefully you saw the art show. Donna Rayner's staff is trying to work on getting more art visible in the schools. And so you're going to see that, you know, a couple of times a year, it'll be every other month. So, you know, we're very proud of the work our students are doing. Wednesday evening, I am going to, I'm going to Torrenton, to the Cornucopia, to the Leadership Awards with students in grade five, eight and twelve. So we're very happy about that. We have some wonderful students and that'll be in the next Region Review. We do have a cave day on the hill on March 25th, 2015. So if you're interested, it's always a good time to talk to the legislature. We do have a leave of absence from Serena Ribos and a resignation from John Ferreira, who was our evening security guard, and I believe we hired someone else who's starting the end of this week.
Yes, Michelle?
Yeah, good question.
Sure.
Just seeing that on the agenda, you don't have to discuss it tonight, but I was just wondering if at some point we could talk about the whole security, the doors, the?
We're having a meeting on Thursday with the administration. Having a meeting tomorrow with our security team, who is our new SRO, myself, Bob Peterson, Rocky Thompson and Don O'Leary. And then on Thursday, we're going to have a meeting with the whole administrative team to try to have some, we have to make decisions on how we run and really keep our schools. During the day, our schools are really pretty well locked down and people at the doors. But at night, it changes in every school. You know, we have a lot of night activities. And some schools have the doors open, some schools don't. You know, so it really varies. So we're trying to get something in place.
Well, I just noticed that the night person, and we used to have a security company and now we don't? Does that?
We don't have the security company anymore.
Okay, well, I just.
There's nobody there at night?
Well, because he's not here anymore.
Right, right, right. But even when he was, I mean, before the security person had a jacket that said they were security and they engaged with people walking in the door, which wasn't really happening. And it seemed kind of.
Okay, we can work on it.
And so I just.
It is important, oh, sorry. I experienced the same thing. And, you know, it's important for the security person to engage whoever is walking by to let that person walking by know that.
You know they're there.
You know they're there.
Yeah, yeah. Just watching a movie, stuff, earbuds in.
Is that everybody or is that just, what's the night?
Just at night.
Okay, because I haven't seen that during the day.
No, just at night.
Or in the morning, okay.
And the kids actually used to like shut it, see if they could turn.
Oh, interesting. Okay, good.
And there was no turning going on.
We'll take it, we'll take care of that.
So I was just.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Cave Tops Convention, four of us went, Jen Pody, Michelle and Greg. And it was really a fabulous, fabulous convention, I have to tell you. We had wonderful speakers. I have the booklet here for you to see. But the first speaker was, I can never say his name, so I have to get it correctly. It's a professor who lived in Finland and now works more here. His name is Posse Salberg. And he wrote the books about Finland, the education and what America can learn. It was really very, very interesting. He was wonderful. Then in the evening on Friday night, we heard from our local astronaut. I don't want to say his name incorrectly too. Rick Mastraccio, who we'd like to get to help us support our STEM program. Maybe we'll name the school after him, the body of caring, whatever we can do. So thank you. Yes, to see what we can do. And then on Saturday, Bill Daggett, who lives from the International Center for Leadership and Education, was an excellent speaker. Really spoke about what you have to do in school, what strategies you have to do, really focusing on what's important as a board. So it really was an excellent conference. And I, you know, the other people could certainly put in their two cents. But I really hope that in the future, even if you can just come for the Friday and go home at night, it really is worth it. I really believe that you would get a lot out of it, plus the sessions also. This was just the keynote speakers. And then the other thing I want to say, and then they can add, is alumni. Tomorrow night, we have our first alumni meeting where we have included everyone who we can find, who is an alumni, who goes to the school and, and works here and is alumni. And to try to plan, we're going to have a picnic in May, going to do some activities to try to get them involved, to help sell our school, to help us be proud of our school and support Chappag. And then also maybe down the road, even provide a little more support. So we have a lot of great things going on. So that's my report.
Okay. Any questions? All right, thank you. Well, I guess that's it. There is a need to go into executive session, discuss negotiations. Yeah, I'm going to move, if I could, Jim, that we go into executive session for the purpose of discussing recent labor negotiations. I think that's. Second? All right, it's moved in second. Before I take a vote, I want to make an announcement. This is from Teresa. All Board of Education members are invited to Wednesday's Visitation Day at each of the elementary schools. The principal welcomes you, the principals welcome you. We'd love to have you visit and see the student learning in action. So that's Wednesday Visitation Day at the elementary schools. What time is it, sir?
Nine thirty.
All day. All right, we're about to go into executive session.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstaining? All right.